I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with justice.
Commissioner Poppins, what are you, an echo this morning? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Lincoln County Commission for this Tuesday, March 26th. We're glad you're all here. So, let's commence with some business, Commissioners. We need a motion to approve the agenda with one caveat. Item number 14, which dealt with the purchase of property, will be removed from this agenda and added to next week's agenda. So with that change, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and approved. We call the roll, please, Christina.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Next item is the consent agenda. We'll take any public comment on the consent agenda as presented.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota, I would like number two to be moved to regular agenda as I have a couple of questions regarding it. Just would be a quick question on number two.
We've had a request to remove item number two, Commissioners. Do you wish to acknowledge that request?
I'll make a motion. Sorry, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to remove that off the consent and move it to regular business.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve item number two, which dealt with the claims of monies that the commission has. And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing done? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Item number two has been removed. For the remaining, we hear no other public comment. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with that change? Second. Motion made and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Poppins, second by Commissioner Erns.
Thank you. Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. We have the consent agenda, which moves us to regular business. Item number one is a public hearing for an appeal on a decision by the Lincoln County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 0032024 to extend 1,500 square feet of accessory building space requested 4,000 square feet. On the property legally described as Track 2, Skiles Addition, southwest one quarter, southeast one quarter, Section 33 of Township 99 NR50, W La Valley Township. Toby.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Toby Brown, representing County Planning Department. The site in before you this morning is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory building at its February 20th meeting. Per the zoning regulations, an appeal can be filed within five days of the approval or denial of a conditional use permit. In this case, an appeal was filed by the neighbor to the south of the subject property. Per the zoning regulations, the planning director shall present the Planning Commission's decision to the Board of Commissioners. Then after a public hearing, the Board of Commissioners shall decide to either uphold, overrule, or amend the decision of the Planning Commission. In this particular case, if you vote to uphold it, you would be allowing the construction of the oversized accessory building. If you vote to overrule the decision of the Planning Commission, you would be voting to not allow the construction of the oversized accessory building. If you vote to amend it, you would be amending the conditions that were approved by the Planning Commission. In that case, you would either add to those conditions or you'd remove those conditions that were approved by the Planning Commission. Subject property is approximately 4,100 feet north of the city of Worthing. Subject property is Zone A1 agricultural, as is all surrounding adjacent properties. Subject property is improved with a single-family dwelling. With all levels of the house, it's approximately 5,000 square feet of total square footage of the property. The property to the east is undeveloped, but it does have a building eligibility, as well as the other properties directly to the east. Again, the appellant's property would be directly to the south of the property. Pictures of the property, the first one looking north would be looking onto the applicant's property. Approximately where that red construction equipment is, is approximately where the building would be constructed. The south picture would be the property, the appellant's property. Applicant did submit an application to build an oversized accessory building. Per the zoning regulations, if accessory building is over 1,500 square feet and in a subdivision of more than four properties, it does require a conditional use permit. In this case, the applicant is proposing to construct the property off of an existing driveway access into the property, which would be directly to the east of the subject property. Applicant is proposing to construct the building off of the property line to the east 10 feet. The zoning ordinance would allow the applicant to go up to 7 feet, but he is going 10 feet on that application. So staff did review the application, did have a number of conversations with the applicant, did identify that this proposed application is in conformance with the performance standards of the zoning regulations, as far as setbacks and other performance standards. Staff did recommend approval of this application. The Planning Commission, again, did have a public hearing on February 20th. There was some comments from the appellant at the meeting. Staff ultimately, or the Planning Commission did ultimately approve this permit with the five conditions that were listed in the staff report. Again, I'll point those out, is that number one will be the physical location of all setbacks and yards, buildings, parking, and circulation elements and similar matters must be in substantial compliance with location of said items as shown on approved site plan. Two, before occupancy, all development and construction substantially comply with the approved plans. Three, the accessory building shall only be used for the storage of personal property and no commercial uses and no commercial storage shall take place. Number four, there shall be no indication of offensive noise, odor, smoke, dust, or glare at or beyond the property line. Five, the permit holder is responsible for compliance with all federal, state, and local rules and regulations and permitting requirements. As proposed by the applicant, the sidewalls will approximately be 18 to 20 feet in height. So with the 4 to 12 pitch, you're looking at anywhere from a 27 to 29 foot top, or from peak to top to bottom. That is in conformance with the zoning regulations. And the A1 zoning district, the maximum height requirement is 35 feet for structures. Staff did post the property for this public hearing, also did send notice to properties within 500 feet of the property. Mr. Chair, there was, per the notice, we allow people to submit written comments prior to the public hearing. So staff has had a number of conversations with neighbors within the area. But there is two correspondence that we did receive that those people will not be in attendance. I'll read those now for, into the record. The first is to whom it may concern. As the closest neighbor and the closest and most visible to the structure, I do have some concerns. I did not hear about the fact the height was uniquely high. As Chad Dolly had explained to me, the walls were going to be 20 feet and the roof peak would be even higher, maybe 26 feet. I appreciate the prior knowledge, but would hope that the commission would consider the structure to be excessively high and limit the total height to be no higher than 20 feet. Chad explained to me he's a builder and that the walls would be 16 feet and the height not exceed 20 to 22 feet. I'd be okay with this. I'm not okay with 20-foot sidewalls and 26 to 28-foot roof peak. This would be a complete obstruction of view and eyesore. My one ask is that Mr. Dobesh plant and maintain a tree line irrigated and fully maintained directly to the east that blocks the visibility of the entire pole structure regardless of house placement and will grow large enough to block visibility in less than five to eight years. I've had the city planting a wind block so the combination would be ideal if the growth of the trees exceeds the roof line. I will not be attending, so I'm hoping my voice as the most impacted neighbor be heard and considered with the commission. Warby Guards, Anthony Lopresti, adjacent landowner to the east. The second correspondence was received from La Valley Township. Hello, Toby. The La Valley Township Board has no concerns with the Dobesh conditional use application. The size of the building, 50 by 80 foot, or 4,000 square feet, is similar to other buildings and the township and the property is Zone A1. Additionally, I spoke with Julie this morning and she explained her position. They have planned for this since building their house and plan to use it for cold storage. They're not operating a business out of it. Her husband is a contractor and will not be having construction materials delivered. Thanks, La Valley Township, Doug Gilbey. I thought I'd just pull up the... So this is the subject picture of the area here. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn the floor back to you. If there's any questions for staff, I can answer those. Otherwise, the appellant is here this morning. We'll have him go first and present his case. Okay?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for our planning and zoning director? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I do have a few questions, but I'm gonna hold off on them until we, after we hear from the folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Appellant is here, sir. You're welcome to come up and address the... Let's hear the proposal of the building. I want to know...
Well, the last meeting, we talked about where the thing is at.
Sir, just a minute. You're not building the building, though, are you? I want the person that's building the building to come forward and talk about where the building it is and, if you would, sir. Excuse me, sir, but we'll get you. We'll take care of it.
Brian Dobesh, homeowner at 47254-279 Street, Worthing, South Dakota.
Brian, you want to tell us about the building? Why you got it? What size? Why it needs to be the size it is?
You bet.
Location, et cetera, et cetera?
You bet. So, proposal for the building is for a, you know, basically our private, personal storage of equipment and, you know, private furnishings and miscellaneous stuff. I have multiple trailers, vehicles, whatnot. I have, you know, two daughters that each have their own vehicles and we planned from day one. You can actually go back to our original building permit where we actually filed for our home. We actually have, even on the site plan, noted where our shop location was gonna be. So the plan is, is from day one, we didn't oversize some of our house areas, be it storage, be it garages, be it whatnot, for the fact that we were intending on always having a shop. So the plan is, is to basically be able to park. I have trailers, I have, you know, multiple vehicles, whatnot, that are currently sitting outside, even a skid loader to help clean snow off the property. We want to be able to park all that stuff and basically keep it under the best condition that it could possibly be so it doesn't weather away sitting outside. So, in time, we would like to also put in a, you know, man cave type scenario, you know, this is a guy's fun shop I want to build and it's my own personal property and whatnot I want to have in there. Maybe put a gym, do whatever I want to do in there. So, that's kind of the intent for the shop.
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Dobesh.
For Brian.
Good morning.
Hello.
Got a question for you, just out of curiosity. Was the size of the shop that you had on your original plans more or less than 1,500 feet?
It was more. The original plan was, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Which, and at the time, not to interject here too much, but at the time when I bought my land, there were no other lots there. We were the first lot. We were the first developed piece of property on that whole section. So, the other land didn't come until, I believe it was 2021 or something along that line. So, we never had any requirements or any restrictions on the 1,500 square feet at that point. Thank you. Thank you.
Brian, you heard the first letter that was read by your neighbor.
Yes.
About the height of the building.
Yes.
Had you ever considered a less tall building than what you currently are proposing?
Yeah, so the consideration for the height, one major consideration is getting a 14-foot garage door because the taller garage door will allow me to... One trailer I do own, which isn't at my current property, is a roughly 12-foot tall, 40-foot long enclosed trailer that I own that I'd like to be able to park in there over the winter months to be able to make sure it doesn't get damaged. So we need at least a minimum of a 14-foot tall overhead door for that. So that's kind of where the starting off point is, is 14. You actually have to have 16 to allow for a 14-foot overhead door. So 16 would be the starting off point, but as I designed the plan, my plan is to have the man cave with loft storage above that. So if you figure, you know, my plans are to have a 10-foot man cave, 18-inch floor truss system. So right there, I'm already at 11 and 1/2 feet. That leaves me, you know, at 16-foot sidewalls, that wouldn't leave me enough headroom as I'm a six, over a 6-foot tall man, to be able to actually access that space. So, that's where the 18-8 is kind of what we actually have on the plan, is 18-8. That would allow for me to use a vaulted truss in there and still have enough headroom up above. So...
If, other questions, Commissioners? I have one more. I think one of the things that that letter proposed was the location of this building.
Sure.
Now, you have that, and by the way, I did go by your property, and you do have a beautiful home.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll leave that alone, but it's a beautiful home.
You bet. Thank you.
But now, why do you, is it possible, or is it possible for you to move this thing so that it may not be as objectionable to your neighbors as it apparently is?
Well, unfortunately, if you look at the, so if you look at the scope of my property, my property is high side on the east, low side on the west. Our lots approximately, you know, from before we started our construction project, before we built our home, it was roughly three foot of fall left to right, or right to left. So with that being said, you always put the garage on the high side of the road, right? And they're on the high side of the property. That's how we do it in construction. Garage high side, that allows for either a walkout or a garden view on the low side of the property. We actually manipulated the dirt and actually made it even into a walkout. So once again, forcing high side to the east, that allows us then to do a shared use driveway and not have to really come up with the aspect of, I believe Ms. Sweater brought it up at the last commission meeting, that we cannot add another access to our property, for one. So adding a second driveway wouldn't work on this option. So having to be able to pull the shop off of our side yard, you know, using the original driveway was kind of basically the main way to do it. It's the only way to do it. And I even spoke with Mr. Brown on, you know, the question was raised on why don't we put the shop behind our house? Well, that's actually a second piece of property, which we have really no access to other than to drive over top of my existing mound system to even get to it. So, septic was in the way, propane's in the way, there's a lot of features and, you know, plans that, you know, restrict us from doing that. So, and it would also create a, basically a water dam if we were to try and locate the shop anywhere else other than where it's located, because it is on the high side of the property.
Okay. Any other questions for the opponent, Commissioners?
Did I hear it correctly, Mr. Chair, that Mr. Brown said something to the effect that it was also going to be used as a gym?
That would be my own personal, just, that was my personal dream, I guess, my personal dream or wish. It's not like a, not a business-type gym, just for my own personal use.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gibbon?
No, not at this time.
Okay. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now open this up, so we will now hear from those in opposition to this. So the opponents, please come forward, give your name and your address, and make your statement.
Sean Lund, 47257-279 Street. I live right across the street. On our last meeting, he did say there was no other place to put it, and there is. He can put it out back. There's like two acres out there. And he just said he manipulated the dirt to fit the house, put the dirt back, and put the shop out back. He also said he's been hauling dirt out of there, which there's a big mound, and then the dump trucks show up, the bulldozers show up. They used the street for their personal loading dock, which he just said he has another big trailer he's gonna store in there, so there's gonna be more semis on top of it. The covenants, I looked at the covenants and it clearly states you're not supposed to haul dirt out of there. And I know it got nothing to do with the covenants, but it shows a pattern of them not caring what they do to whoever they do it to. They sent my wife a letter when they thought, at one point in time, they thought they was gonna build all the houses on that side of the road. That didn't happen. They sent my wife a text with all the covenances that they was gonna enforce, which was like 30 things. Well, that got me thinking. I went and looked at there, there's only 10 things on there, and they didn't even write them. They were gonna try to add covenances to them, and one of them was no businesses and no traffic. Then they had to parade of homes on our street two times and had 200 cars everywhere. Every day they've lived there, they've used that place for their business. That's their office, that's where clients come. Our whole street is surveillance with our surveillance cameras, and it's a parade of cars pulling in and out all the time. I've actually unstuck semis, dropping rafters off and get stuck in the middle of the road. It has been nothing but a nightmare of cars, semis, bulldozers, whatever they want to do. They can put it out back, or they can make it smaller. It just works best for them. The guy to the east of them, when he shows up, he's gonna get a big surprise when he builds his dream home, because he's gonna be looking at a wall. They literally, and I just seen on there where it said no lighting. They're such bad neighbors. They got so many lights on the front of their house, we have blackout curtains on that side of the house. If they put one light on that, we're gonna have the police over there. If they put one light on that building, every time they flick that switch, we're calling the cops. We're done with that. I feel 100% they're gonna use that for their business. In the last meeting, he said he was gonna do sprint cars in there. Well, if you look at the covenants, no he ain't, because that sprint cars are a business. Hey, did I interrupt you? Shut your face.
Hey, careful, sir, please.
All right. If you can't shut him up, I will. Anyways, sprint cars are a business. And the covenants clearly states no noise, which that thing, and sprint cars are loud. All right? Now he just said he's gonna have semi-trailers in there. Well, the driveway ain't big enough to get semi-trailers in there, for one thing. To me, once that building is built, is full-blown. I'd have one question. If it's not for industrial, why is it industrial size? When that guy calls it an eyesore, that's what it's gonna be. When I moved in there, it was the country. We was looking at cornfield. We had a dream. Then they knocked on our door, and we've been looking at an airplane landing strip of lights ever since. I pulled cars out of there, vans, electrical vehicles. They wasn't even around. They'd knock on my door at 9 o'clock at night, and I'd have to go pull a van out because it got stuck in their mud hole. However, the, once it's built, I feel that it's gonna be full-blown industry. He's not gonna care what anybody else thinks. He fully shown he don't care. Also, one of the covenances is that they didn't write, that the actual people that developed it wrote, was they had to have permission for any building. Not size, it doesn't say size. It says they need their permission for any building. I didn't hear, I didn't hear they had permission. Everything they do shows that they don't care about the neighbors, they don't care, they're gonna do what works best for them. They can put it out back and they can make it smaller, they're just not gonna. I feel it's gonna be, I moved to the country for a reason, and it wasn't, you don't let a car lot show up in the middle of the residential area. Why do you let industry show up in the country? You know? You're not gonna let somebody start a car lot in the middle of town. You certainly, I don't feel it, and 100%, like I said, one of the covenances, it wouldn't make me so mad, but there was like 30 things on the covenances that they sent us. We said, "We don't care. What does that have to do with us? We don't care. If you can talk somebody into staying in their house in the country, go ahead." One of them was no businesses and no traffic. Since then, like I said, they've had to parade of homes on that street two times, and endless supply of cars, nonstop. It's all surveillance, so I know how many come and go. And bulldozers. Again, he said, he admitted that he hauls that dirt out of there. Well, it shows that he's not supposed to. But I say, put the dirt back where you got it from and put the shop out there so nobody's gotta look at it. I don't feel it's right, and...
Mr. Lund, I'm gonna say thank you. I think you've made all of your points, and I've copied them all down. And if you don't mind, we'll open and have another individuals that would like, are gonna speak against it as well. Okay?
Yeah, write down, no lights.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to clarify...
Okay. Mr. Commissioner Poppins?
Sir, if I could, actually, I just would like you to make comment pertaining specifically to the size, because that's what the gentleman...
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about, is the 30-foot in the air. I mean, that's industrial. That's it. That's all you build a building for. If it's industrial size, it's industrial. I work in a 5,000-square-foot shop and we got seven semis in there right now. You know how big it is? Seven semis in the spot where he's talking about. He keeps talking about his daughter's car. I didn't realize he had that much personal property, that he's gonna fill a monstrosity. To me, it's crazy.
Okay.
Now it's just down to who's gonna build the bigger one. Oh, PS, if this goes through, we want a permit, because we want to build a shop right across our driveway, and we're gonna make them pay to relocate our driveway, because somebody let them butt our driveway right up against ours. Whoever did that, they butted our driveway right up against ours.
If we can, again, state on what you're objecting to, to the specific size.
Yeah, I object to total size of the whole thing. It's uncalled for. It's not a, it's an industrial building. It's not a man cave, it's not a hobby shop. It's...
Mr. Lund, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there others that wish to speak in opposition to this particular building site? Anybody that wants to speak in opposition here? Whoop. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tiffany Riley. I live 4,900 South Caraway Drive, Sioux Falls. My purpose for being here is, I'm the trustee of the Joe Skiles Living Trust, and we, my brothers and I own the property that is right across the river, or the creek, from the property in question. So I guess that makes us a neighbor. My concern is truthfully the size of the structure and the location. And I think that that has already been discussed and kind of gone over. The size, the height of it, is really the issue for me. I also question the, what, the loft. There were some drawings that were sent that, to me, it looks like, I don't know if you're familiar with it, with the term shouse, a shed house. It's a new thing that is an up-and-coming thing. Barn dominiums, if you've heard of those, where it's...
Yes.
A barn, but there's living space that's right within it. And I do know that Mr. Dobesh does those structures. If you look at his construction website, that's kind of one of his specialties, is these shouse slash barn dominiums. And so it kind of feels like that's what this is becoming. And so, you know, he mentioned today, you know, a man cave or a gym or something along those lines. You know, at that point, a 4,000-square-foot structure becomes more than that, because then you're, if you go up, then you're adding, or at least in residential, you're adding square footage. So I don't know what the, what his plan would be to loft, but, you know, does that double it? Does it make it an 8,000-square-foot structure? I don't know. But anyway, my concern is the height of the structure, the location of the structure. I know when my dad sold these lots to these individuals, the idea was that, he, I get a little emotional, wanted to share the beauty of the area, and here we are, fighting. I'm the middle child. My job in life is to negotiate and make things... My job in life is to negotiate and make things right for everyone. So if there is a way that, um, which there is, if he could move the structure where he can still, where Mr. Dobesh can still get what he wants out of this. Um, but that it's also not disruptive to Mr. La Presty and or Mr. Lund. Um, that would be preferable. Um, the, the, the lot behind him, if you can see, it is, um, parceled off. But that is owned by, um, Brian and Julie Dobesh. Um, there is not a, there's not a wall, there's nothing, I mean, on the, on the picture, it shows a pink line. But when you look at it, it's, it's all one, one lot down to the creek. So, those would be my thoughts, my concerns. Um. Um, and just, you know, I apologize that we weren't here for the initial meeting, the planning and zoning meeting on February twentieth. We did not know about that meeting. The first I heard about this, um, building of the shed, and I use that term lightly, um, is when Mr. Lund contacted me after that meeting to, um, ask about the covenants, which is a whole other issue.
Any, any questions?
Just a couple of questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you for coming. I'm, two things, do you know was that second parcel, the second lot platted, uh, with an eligibility on that?
There is not an eligibility.
On that, so building rights can be restrictive on that piece of property. Second thing, although we did, cannot hear pertain to covenants placed on properties. Could you just say if there were covenants placed on and or restrictions on placing on those lots?
There are covenants.
There are covenants.
On, on the properties, yes.
Restricting the size of buildings?
Um, not the size of it.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm, I'm a little curious as well about the covenants that are on, um, on those parcels of property. I mean, are they being followed, not followed?
Um. Um. Do you, do you want to get into that? I understand that, um, covenants are kind of a different thing.
They are, they are different, but I want, I wanna, there's a lot of people that live right there and it looks fairly residential in nature to me. So, um, I get the feeling that there's maybe some more things that are going on between neighbors than are maybe being presented today. And I just wanna know if you know about any of that and I'd like to hear it.
Okay, so yes, there are covenants in place. Um, you know, we, they, we tried to make it, um, where people could do what they wanted to do on their acreages. These, each of these, each of these lots are approximately five to six acres total. Um, and I believe Mr. Dobesh's is actually closer to seven, I think it's about six point eight acres. Um, but the, the idea was, you know, again, a nice acreage, nice, nice little area for, um, for people to, you know, live out in the country and, and, um, have a beautiful view. Um, the first thing on the covenants, um, number one, it says land use and building type. No lot shall be used except for residential purpose exclusively. Um. I think it's pretty clear that Mr. Dobesh is a contractor. He, he has used his home as examples and, and parades of homes and, and different things like that. It is a beautiful home, I agree. Um, it is a beautiful home. Um, but, you know, there may, may or may not be a little line crossed, I don't know. Um, removal of soil is, is addressed in it. Um, no soil may be removed from this addition. Um. I went back and re-watched the, um, the meeting, the planning and zoning meeting on February twentieth. And, um, it was, it came out in that the soil has been removed, um, from the site from when that, the house, when the home was built. Um, that, it does address outbuildings, but it says suitable or necessary outbuildings to serve the principal structure may be permanently constructed. All outbuildings shall be placed within the minimum building setback line of a solid permanent foundation or set with frost-free cement footings and a cement floor. So that's that particular one. Um, Mr. Dobesh did contact me after Mr. Lund contacted me to, um, try to get approval on that particular number three of the covenants. Um, I, I have an email from him dated February twenty-sixth, um, asking about that, um, about number three. Um, and then it talks about fences, walls or hedges, um, replating of subdivision, no one except developer. Developers prior written approval shall at any time ever replat, subdivide or resubdivide any lot. Um, nuisances is, is one of the covenants. Um, and one of the sentences in that says self-employed business where the public is invited shall not be permitted. Um, so again, that goes at parade of homes. Um, and then the, the, the big thing really for me is, um, the last one is approval of plans. Um, no building fence, wall or other structure shall be commenced, erected or maintained until the plans and specifications showing the nature, kind, shape, height, materials, floor plans, location and approximate cost of such structure shall have been submitted to and approved in writing by the developer, if so requested by developer prior to start of construction. And that clearly didn't happen until after. Somebody must have called him out and said that you need to do this. So, so those are just a few of the, um, the covenants that are in place. I don't know if you, I can give you copies of this, but.
Well, I, I listened to the planning and zoning, um, hearing on this and there was a lot of discussion. There was also some discussion about, um, sprint cars, um, working on, you know, like a car shop to work on the sprint cars, which I go to sprint car races and they're really loud. Um, and I, I think Mr. Lund has pigeons on his property that he enjoys there. So, I'm just, I don't know, feeling.
It's a good neighbor, bad neighbor thing. A good neighbor thing, right? And that's, again, where I get emotional, because that, the intent of this was, you know, be, be a good person, be a good neighbor. You can still get what you want, but just do it in a way that doesn't affect everybody else. Um, so, again, that's, that's kind of where, where I, as the trustee of the trust come in. Um, you know, my brother and sister-in-law happen to live on the, on the edge there. Um, my dad's significant other still lives in the home place. Um, so it's an important area too. We, we farm the ground, um, right in the, in the back there, as you can see, so a lot of connection there.
Ms. Riley, um, thank you for being here this morning. I've got a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of interested in exploring this win-win scenario you've proposed. Um, do you have, so if I understand correctly, what you're saying is it's okay for them to build this building, you just want it in a different location on their lot?
As long as it, as long as it meets all of the other requirements, I don't have a problem with, with the structure itself. The use of the structure is concerning. Um, if it becomes a shouse, that becomes another living space on their property, which they only have one eligibility, which is the home that they're living in. Um. If it becomes an office, again, that, that goes at the, the use of the, of the land or the, the area to, from, it goes from being personal use to commercial. Um, so, you know, I, yeah. I mean, if we can get to a place where everybody can, can feel like it's an okay situation, um, that I'd be comfortable with. Um, I just, we, we do have some history, unfortunately, with Mr. and Mrs. Dobesh. And, um, it kind of tends to be where, you know, they, they kind of do their, do their thing and hope that nobody calls them out and.
Do, ma'am, you said your father was the original developer? Is that correct?
Correct, so the Joby Skiles Living Trust owns that, owns the, the property surrounding it. And that's who, um, the Dobeshes bought their property from, correct?
Do you know, when the covenants were created, do you know why there was no specific size restriction placed in them?
We talked about that at the time and, um, maybe naively wanted to not be real tight on that, because we understand that living out in the country, you do need snow removal equipment, you do need things for, um, for, for living in the country. Um, if you, the, the map here doesn't show it, but, um, the, at, at the home place, we do have a shed. Um, and it's comparable in size, it's got the twenty-foot sidewalls. Um, the difference is that there is, I don't know, four or five tractors, a caterpillar, a combine, um, farm equipment stored in, in that structure. The other thing is that it's tucked back behind the grove, um, so you don't even see it from the road. And that's, again, I know some of you are country folk and that's kind of the neighborly thing to do.
Yeah, I noted, here's why I bring this up. I'm reading the staff report here, it says, uh, that there's a shed out there that's thirty-two hundred square feet. Um, was there any objection to that back when that was built?
No, there wasn't. Um, Mr. Dolly, Chad, um, talked with us about that. Um, he presented it, he, um, brought the, the plans to us, the, the size of it, the, the intended use of it. Um, again, so that's a thirty-two hundred square foot structure, um, but it's not twenty plus feet tall.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Further questions? If I understand this, major objections that, I mean, you got covenant issues that concerning you about usage and, but would be the size of the building and location. So if the size of the building were not excessive, um, and its location were to be moved to, um, another site on their property, this would not be an issue?
I, I don't foresee it being, as long as the use of it was appropriate, correct? I don't, I wouldn't foresee that being an issue for, I, I, I speak on behalf of the trust. As a trustee, my brothers are also trustees on, on the trust, so I would want to run that by them. But from a covenants standpoint, I feel like we could, we could get to an agreeable place.
So I'm, I'm wrestling here with, with two thoughts. One, if they agreed to move the building site off of its present plans to the back,
Mm-hmm.
would the size then, would the, would the size issue go away? Or would you still have concerns about its usage, uh, as you have mentioned on housing and several other issues con- uh, concerning covenants?
The size, the size alone is if it was not obtrusive to the neighbors. If it was behind the house, the size itself, I don't think would be an issue. It would be the, the, um, whatever that front corner of the shed would be used for. That would be, that would be my next question. The size itself, if they, if they wanted to do that and, um, it wasn't used as another residence and, and or an office or business, um, I wouldn't foresee an issue with that.
Okay. Alright, any other questions, Commissioner?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. We now have, um, any more opponents to this, uh, particular, uh, building? If not, do we have proponents? I know you have, sir.
Once again, Brian Dobish. Um, a lot of things were just brought up here that, um, I would like to debunk very quickly. Um, first being that this building, even though, you know, I may wanna put a hobby race car in there occasionally, I don't own a race team. I don't own a business, I don't intend on owning a race team that would have anything to do with that shop. My nephew owns a race car. The race car is stored in Brookings, South Dakota. The occasional time he would come down to work on the race car to race at, you know, I ninety Speedway or at, at Housat Speedway would be the very, very rare occasion that it would happen. That, that was brought up at the last planning commission meeting, cause Mr. Boots knows that I have relation that races. It's not my race team, there's no business being run out of there as a race team. That quashes that right away. Um, I guess another thing that was brought to the, my attention here is that, uh, someone bringing up the, the idea of it being a shouse. Um, we don't have another building eligibility on that property. Um, that would not be allowed by the planning and commission meeting, you know, or the planning and zoning. Um, so that's just something that is obviously not even acceptable. Um, to my, also to my knowledge, when, in speaking with Mr. Brown, um, putting the shop on that adjacent piece of property behind us is not allowed as well. So, uh, the location for the shop unfortunately really can't go anywhere, cause to the west of our property, there's an existing shelter belt um, with, with no driveway access to it. Um, once again, that, that shop was proposed on our plan from day one before any of these covenants were even enforced or even, even listed. Uh, one thing that got brought to my attention here too, is, uh, Mr. Lund speaking regarding having our house on the parade of homes. Our house is on the parade of homes in twenty-twenty, before any of these covenants were signed, before they're even adopted to the properties, because the additional pieces of property were not there. So having a parade of homes, and which, which also was approved by Mr. Skiles at the time. We made sure that he knew that we were gonna do that from day one. So, that kinda wipes that right out of the covenants as well on having parade of homes. Um, once again, outbuildings noted in the covenants basically clearly states that uh, we have to be within the minimum setback requirements on a solid, for, you know, frost-free foundation, which we have in the plans and on a cement floor, which we also have in the plans. Um, regarding the, the removal of dirt, there was one, one instance that dirt was removed from our property on the covenants. Um, that, that we obviously didn't know that that was there, wasn't paying attention to the fact that that was there. And I'd gladly bring the black dirt back if we need to, so, um, that's not, that's not an issue for me. Um, regarding the dozer on the road, I actually have a photo of the damage to the road. So if anyone would like to see, if there's any way we can, we can put this up, but.
Could you just clarify one thing for me real quick?
Yes, sir, yes.
So you purchased the property, there were no covenants at the time, did, did you have to agree to covenants to be signed?
I, I did have to agree to covenants after the fact, after.
But at the time you purchased it, the covenants weren't listed?
There were no covenants at all when we purchased our land to begin with. It was when we bought the parcel land behind our property is when the covenants came about.
So are the covenants attached to your property?
They did ask that they wanted to be attached to my property as well, yes.
Okay, and you agreed to it?
And I agreed to it, yes, sir.
Thank you for that clarification.
Um, but I do have a photo here of said damage to the road, that per, that, that Mr. Lund is speaking of, of the dozer. And you can see that there's barely any damage to that road at all. It was very, very little damage. And it was loading of the dozer, the dozer was there to grade my land.
Chairman, I think we're getting off topic.
Yep.
To build.
To the size.
I'm just, I'm writing a few notes down here and if you could address just the size.
I just kinda wanted to debunk some of the lies that were being told here.
Size and location are the issues.
Yep.
Commissioner, Aaron, did you have a question?
Yeah, just so I'm clear about this, you said that, I wanna make sure I'm interpreting this correctly.
Yes, sir.
You said that you couldn't build the outbuilding on the other lot? Um, is that from a construction point of view or is that from some kind of?
I believe that's planning and zoning. I, we spoke to Mr. Toby and, and Toby said that there's no possible way to build that structure on that back piece of land.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm getting at, is that a regulatory issue or is that a construction feasibility issue?
It'd be regulatory to my understanding. And, and, and also to the topic of the land behind, basically at that line, my land drops off significantly behind my property at that point. Which, once again, that it would make building a shop in that location next to impossible because of the, the slope of the land.
So, I, I have a question, if I might.
Yes.
Uh, Toby?
Toby, if that parcel was replatted, would he be able to build on that other parcel? And a, a building like this? If it was replatted as one parcel? That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
And then once again, I guess going back to the shop side, the size and the height, like I said, the, the pure use of that is for a man cave. It's not for, you know, it's for a shop, for personal use. That's what the shop's for. You can go across the hallway and see every one of my vehicles is titled in my personal name. And right now they're sitting outside weathering away. As far as then, like I said, it can't be a shouse. That's, that's per, you know, basically our building eligibility is we don't have the ability to do that. The trailer that I'm proposing to put in there isn't a semi. There's going to be no additional traffic coming to our property. There'll be no construction materials ever delivered to the site. As Mr. Poppins knows, he's in a, he's in a construction world. He sells fireplaces. I would not have a fireplace delivered to my building site to turn around and send it out through a job site. That's not what we do. And then regarding, I guess, the question of running my, running my business out of my house, I do not run my business out of my house. My businesses ran out of my truck. I drive to the job sites. I drive to meet clients. I meet clients where we need to meet to, to basically propose and get jobs done. So that's, that's how the, you know, my business functions. So. But regarding the height, once again, it's, you know, could I, could I make the heights slightly shorter? Yes, I, I think, like I said, the bare minimum that I could make everything work would be an 18-foot sidewall. I could reduce the roof pitch to three and a half 12 and still be a suitable slope to allow snow to come off of it, which, which I do have drawings. So regarding the height as well, I think the question was maybe raised that the, that people were saying that the building is actually going to be taller than my house. It is not. I brought that up at the last planning commission meeting. If you can see here on my plans, once again, I don't know if you can show that, Toby. Okay. So here on this plan here, you can see right here that basically this grade line right here is the grade that my land is across. And you'll, you'll see if you, as you come to my property, my driveway comes up to my garage. So this grade right here is the land height that comes all the way across to my shop. You'll see right there, 30-foot is the peak of my house. Here's the proposed shop right now at 18-foot eight. We're either 18-foot eight for the, for the sidewall height. It's actually 28-foot two is the height to the peak. And that's with a 412 roof pitch at an 18-foot eight sidewall. So it's, it's shorter than my house.
Sir, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So you said your sidewalls are 18-8. I think I heard Ms. Riley earlier say that there's a, is there also a building out there that's got 20-foot sidewalls?
I believe she's speaking at her own, at her farm, at her, the Joe Skiles farm.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm not.
Yep, that's, that's just kind of down around. Yep, that's down around the corner.
Any other statements you'd like to make?
Basically, I think that's it. I think, I, there's just a lot of, you know, misinformation that's being told here tonight, you know, or today, sorry, regarding that, the building structure and the use. And as far as traffic coming up and down the road, there's, you know, my wife, myself and my daughters that come down my road. Clients don't come there, you know, it's not, my subcontractors don't come there. We don't meet people there. We meet people at the job sites. We meet people at Starbucks. We meet people at wherever. So that's not going to be the use for the building. The building is for my personal storage. I have two storage units full of stuff. So I just want to, I'm renting those units right now. I want to get that stuff put in my own shop so I can have access to it on a daily basis. And that's, that's the use.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the commission. We've had, we're not going to play the seesaw back, back and forth. We've had ample time for everybody to express their particular views. So we'll close the commission, our, close this hearing and commissioners, it's time for us to sit and talk amongst ourselves as to what questions we may have, discussions, options, et cetera. So the floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Toby a question. I told you I was going to hold this till the end, if I might. Toby, where did this 1,500-foot ordinance come from? Why is it 1,500 feet? And how did the setbacks get determined at the time as well, if you know?
So the 1,500-foot accessory building requirement, that's been in existence since the 2009 regulations. It's been pretty consistent. This is the first appeal we've ever had of the Board of Commissioners. If you've served on the planning commission, you know this is a pretty regular routine. We typically do one of these a month. And they range anywhere from, the last year we approved one that was over 9,000 square feet, which is on the Baker Crossing Golf Course. So it's a pretty common occurrence. The 1,500 square foot, I don't have an answer for you on that other than it's just been the standard for, as long as it's been the standard.
Is what you're finding is that there's an increased number of conditional use permit requests to exceed the 1,500-foot ordinance amount?
No, I, I wouldn't say that. I, I would say the 1,500 square foot, if I go back to that answer, I would say that's a typical two-car garage size, which would typically be in a residential setting. What makes this application unique is, as you've noted, this property is owned A1 agricultural. If they propose an agricultural building on the rear portion, they could probably go as high as they want it to or size-wise. It's because it's within this residential use property that they, that they have to buy by that regulation.
Well, and what I'm trying to get at here is, and I appreciate your answers. It may not be applicable to this matter, but I think it is overall, is whether two-car garage size of 1,500 square feet is realistic, given the fact that we're talking about people building accessory buildings out in the country? And that's just kind of a 30,000-foot view looking down on it, wondering if that's even a realistic ordinance anymore?
I would say for the neighbors it is, but I would say for the applicants, on some occasions, it's not.
Thank you.
And just for clarity, Toby, if I may, if you're done.
Yes, thank you.
This is the first one that's ever been appealed. In your recollection, have any been denied?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Gibbon, any comments?
Is there any possibility of making it smaller?
Mr. Gibbon, or Commissioner Gibbon, if I may, I don't know if it's our role today to try to negotiate a circumstance. We've had something that's been presented by, to the Planning and Zoning Board. It had been approved and it's been appealed to us. Our role today is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, to simply either agree with the planning zoning decision or overturn it. So I don't know that we can try to sit here and negotiate and make changes to it. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct. Commissioner Landy?
You know, just the use is what concerns me right now. And one thing that was said, I think it was Ms. Riley that said it, leads me to believe that things, they, things are going on out there. Nobody wants to come into these meetings and talk bad about their neighbors. But the problem is, is if given inch, and we think what's being told to us by the applicant is true, I'm getting the feeling that maybe it's not, just based on what everybody's saying because there's so much angst in the room about this. So ultimately, if it's a given inch and we approve this and then they take a mile, that comes back on the county to enforce. And I'll be frank with you, we're not that good at enforcing things. Or at least I haven't seen anybody come in here for a long, long time to enforce something out of our, out of our planning and zoning office. So, you know, I, I would support overruling the planning and zoning's decision.
Any other comments?
If I could expand on that, if I may, Commissioner Landy. Again, this decision or that question is the size of it. The use of it is a different issue. And I don't disagree with you at all on those aspects of it. It has been an ongoing problem that we have seen in our county. We are making strides in improving that. Correct me, has there, I have this question to staff, has there been any complaints as of use of the property currently?
Not on this property, no.
Thank you.
Any other? You know, folks, you have, this is my take. You have a situation here where you have built a beautiful home. I mean, it is, that's absolutely, but you've heard all of these neighbors. You've heard your neighbor talk about excessive lights. And they've had to had blackout curtains because of that lights. You've heard all kinds of comments and, as Commissioner Landy said, I don't, I don't know that they make these up. And you're going to, you want to put a building up that's going to alienate all your friends. I mean, they're not going to, they don't like it. They don't want it. So, you know, to try to win a situation where you're probably going to live there a long time. And, you know, if you look across the street or to your left or to your right, I guess it would be when I saw the house, and you got neighbors that just are very offended, this is not a good place to, an environment to have. So, you know, I, I'm wondering, the question was asked if you could replant this thing. And I know it's low. I know that. You're a builder, but they do haul dirt in. And I've seen a lot of places where they have, if you go up to Sioux Falls and 57th Street, they filled in every wetland there is. And so I don't know that black dirt is relatively expensive, but you can get fill dirt at a reasonable rate. So I don't know why you just don't explore all of those options and try to build a neighborhood that is built on neighborliness as opposed to, that's hostility. And that's something I told you when we voted that night. I've been by your place and what troubles me yet today is that there is a way in which you can get your building, but it doesn't necessarily have to be right on the front doorstep of other neighbors. So with that, I'm going to close that. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve or deny the appeal.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to deny the appeal.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Aaron, second by Commissioner Poppins, to deny the appeal of this particular building site. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so the comments I would just make in support of the motion are, I appreciate everybody being here today. I think you're all here in the spirit of good faith. I can't really parse out truth from fiction with some of these complaints. You know, are there lights? Are there not lights? Are the covenants being followed? Are they not being followed? I, I mean, we just don't have the capacity as a county commission to make findings on all those issues. And frankly, if you want to enforce a covenant, that's not our job. You have to go to civil court to go and do that. And my understanding is there's no proceedings pursuing covenant enforcement, which tells me, you know, how serious are you about wanting to go enforce covenants? It's, costs time. It's expensive. I get it. But I think what the neighbors here, the point they're trying to make is that they want a little bit of give from the Dobishes on some of these issues. What I don't understand though is, you know, why the building needs to be built where it is? You know, that precise location? Because what I heard from the neighbors was, you know, you could go ahead and build the building if you built it in a different location. That's essentially what I heard from them. Now, on the other hand, I don't think that the loudest neighbor should be able to control his or her other neighbor's activities just because they're loud. The squeaky wheel shouldn't always get the grease. And they shouldn't always be able to control their neighbor's activities just because they're the loudest person in the room or the noisiest or the most boisterous. So I want to say that as well. But I do appreciate everybody coming in here. I also appreciate Commissioner Schmidt's comments about the fact of wanting to try to actually arbitrate this thing. Because I think in terms of local government, even though we don't play the role of an adjuster or mediator, we do. That, that's what we're trying to do here this morning. I wish that would have happened before you all came in here and we could all sing kumbaya and join hands and it'd be good for everybody. But let's just face it, there's just times where your neighbors are not going to be happy with things you do. And it may not even be related to this today. There may be other hatchets that haven't been buried yet. But the question I'm asking in my mind is, you know, number one, the height of the shop is 18-foot eight inches and the overall height of the building is going to be the same height as his house that he built out there. So to me, it tells me that it's in line with at least his, his own lot of what he's doing there. And then I'm also looking at this other 3,200-foot building and, or square foot building. I'm saying to myself, clearly that got authorized out there and at some point in time, the neighbors must have not had a problem with it, at least from the surface record. The third thing is usually none of these buildings get appealed like this. Maybe some of the motivation for appeal is, there appears to be some, you know, back and forth between the neighbors. But I want to say this, and I think this goes towards a larger issue. It may even go towards the issue of a couple of the agenda items I put on the agenda today. 1,500 square feet is not big enough for folks who live out in the country and want to store, you know, store equipment and store vehicles and things like that. Gone are the days of a two, two-car garage where you can put a skid loader and a tractor and a car or store anything you want in there. I don't care if it's a sprint car that you want to store in there. That's of no consequence to me. Frankly, it shouldn't be of any consequence to the neighbors what he stores in there as long as he is following the rules. That's the most important issue. Because I don't care if you got a car or truck, a bus, a camper, whatever. Folks who live out in the country in these, I guess, rural residential settings, they want to have big accessory buildings. That really is kind of the vision for where I see the rural area going in Lincoln County. People want beyond a two-car stall garage. It's just a fact. Now, 4,000 square foot, the Dobishes, I can understand why they've made themselves a target here because it's the biggest square footage building in the neighborhood. But when we're looking at setbacks, character of the neighborhood and things like that, I think it, in my mind, I don't think it's unreasonable or unobtrusive. So that's why I'm going to support denying the appeal.
Thank you, Commissioner. With no further comments, we'll roll call, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Okay, I want to preface this. I was in the planning and zoning board at the time. Had I known what I know now, sir, I would have not voted that night in favor of this. So I'm going to vote no on this because of several reasons. And they may not be justified to you, but I'm serious about this. You can build this building. You can get this done if you want to. But in doing so, I think you demonstrate to your neighbors that you are a good neighbor. And there are a lot of innuendos. There are a lot of things that we hear. We can't justify, are they right? Are they spiteful? So it doesn't make me feel very good to turn an individual like this down right now. But I do think if you go back and you evaluate, you're a successful businessman. You build good buildings. You do different things. But the overriding sentiment to me is that this is not the place for this particular building, but you do have options. So with that, I vote no. The vote is three to two. The, the appeal is upheld. The, the appeal is upheld. Correct?
Which means planning and zoning-
Yes.
Uh, decision is overruled.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is what you explained.
We've overridden the planning and zoning board, which we don't like to do, but in this case, we did. Okay? Thank you all, thank you all for your appearance, thank you all for being here. The next item is another public hearing pursuant to South Dakota codified law seven dash twenty-one dash twenty-two for the purpose of adopting the following supplements to the twenty-four budget. A supplement adding to commission's budget in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents to due to resolutions two four oh seven dash one seven passed on February sixth, twenty twenty-four for personal services increase to judicial budget in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and four cents to public defender contract per resolution twenty-three eleven sixteen passed, eleven seven twenty-three for overflow contract increase to treasurer's budget in the amount of two thousand dollars for supplies and materials increased in posted cost increase to the airport budget in the amount of four hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents for airport improvements. One hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents for the federal grant, for the federal administration, aviation administration, D O R nine, comma, one three seven. Period done seven twenty-four oh two dash twenty-two passed on February fourth of twenty-four. Purchase of a pickup increase to the TIF number eight budget in the amount of three hundred and six thousand eighty dollars and fifty-six cents for current taxes and principal payments. Ms. Lund.
Well, you've pretty much said it all.
I read that rather well.
So, what we're gonna do is, you'll probably see, we're gonna do supplemental hearings now throughout the year rather than waiting till the end of the year when it's more pressing. So, this is for the first quarter supplemental hearings for the different accounts that we've gone through. Franny is here to talk about her budget. I don't know if you wanted to come up, or, but these are just things that I've gone through so far in the budgets and noticed that we have to do because of resolutions that you've passed. So, I don't know if you want Franny to come up here, if you want extra explanation, or what, how you want to do it. So, it's up to you.
Any comments about the airport or anything? Commissioner Poppins, I see that was an airport improvement.
So, you'll see that on the airport improvements, the one line is increasing it by five hundred and fourteen eight sixty-six eighty-two, but the next two line are increasing the revenue. So, that's the offset, the expenditure, and then it's getting reimbursed by the federal and state grants.
So it?
Yeah.
Offset, so.
Yeah, it's, and that was a timing issue. Technically, it should have been paid out in twenty-three, but it wasn't, so it would have been in twenty-three's budget, so. And you, we'll probably have more airport grant supplementals as we go along because we only budgeted sixty thousand for airport improvements, and I think we've got more than that projected in projects.
Any more questions for our auditor?
Just a couple of questions, Sheri, and thanks for coming up here, I appreciate it. And if you don't have this in front of you, that's fine, just say so. So, the judicial budget, the amount of ninety-one thousand for the public defender contract?
Yep.
What's going on with that?
So, we had to do an overflow contract. And we had Myers-Bilian hired in December, I think it was. And they are, what was it, seventeen thousand dollars a month? So, it added ninety thousand to the overall public defender contract.
Okay.
So, and these are all rough numbers because I don't have it in front of me, but that's what it was. We did the overflow contract at the end of the year, that's what's, the total of the contract ended up being.
Okay, I got it. And then the TIF, what is TIF number eight?
So, what I normally do for, TIF number eight is tax collect, tax increment district in Harrisburg. It's usually whatever we collect in taxes, I pay out. I don't know what they are until the taxes are calculated. So, I normally, I just put a number, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe is what it was. Well, this year, after I calculated the taxes, it's nine hundred and some thousand dollars that will be paid out. So, I have to have it budgeted to pay it out. So, it's an in and out, taxes collected, then they get paid out, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions for our auditor? Commissioner Gibbon, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, Sheri. Is there a public comment on this particular hearing? Hearing none.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Aaron, second by Commissioner Landine. Will you, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Item number three, board action to approve budgeted cash transfer and account cleanup.
Okay, so, every year during the budget process, we do budgeted cash for nine-one-one emergency management, airport, and other funds. This is the budgeted cash transfer for nine-one-one emergency management and the airport in the respectful amounts. Then I have some accounting cleanup that I want to do. We, with the annual report or the audited report, we moved all the ARPA funds into the general fund, so we don't need that budgeted item anymore. So, I'm just basically getting rid of the four hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred out of the budget authority. And then we were previously accounting for postage, countywide postage in a separate fund. Well, when it comes to the annual report, I have to move it into my fund anyway. So, I'm just moving those funds into my supplies and material budget to account for them. So, that's the cleanup for that. So, then I just need a motion to basically do all of that. Make sense?
Any other questions for our auditor on this item? Any public comment to be had on this item number three? If not, call the roll, please.
We need a motion.
Get a motion?
Oh, yeah, need a motion, let's get a motion going here.
A motion to approve, Landine.
Motion by Landine.
I'll second it.
Second by Gibbon. Now, we can call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Item number four, board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation regarding the annual payout of funds for pavement markings. Terry, good morning.
Good morning. So, what I have before you this morning, this is an agreement from South Dakota DOT. So, about a year and a half ago, they came to the, the highway superintendents across the state, and they were requesting or asking if we would take on the striping projects, the, the, because typically the DOT would facilitate a contract statewide striping program for the counties. And I think part of their reasoning was, and I think I told you about this maybe, maybe a month or two ago, when we, when we went to bid on our own striping. But typically, the reason is, I think they're, they're short-staffed, and it's hard for them to get all the plans out and get this bid in time, and we're having problems. Project years were, were blending over into the next year. So, so basically, this is an agreement, it's going to be for fifteen years. Basically saying, stating that the state is going to pay us out our portion of the money that was used for the striping program. And I think Lincoln County, I think we're, I think it's about eighteen thousand, a little over eighteen thousand dollars a year that we'll get, and that'll be paid out with our STIP money that we get every year, so.
Okay. Any more questions for our highway superintendent? Okay, other public comment on this particular item? If not, we need a motion.
So, I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Aaron's, audit, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries five zero. Number five, board action to purchase metal culverts and bridge materials off the Beadle County bid for up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Terry?
Yes, thank you for reading that, that is what I'm looking to do. Beadle County has a, a bid for culverts and then bridge materials in that bid. Basically, we're looking to purchase off this bid to purchase metal culverts this year, so. And again, this is a budgeted item, my budgeted item for that is up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so.
Okay. Any questions on that, commissioners? Hearing none, any public comment? Hearing none. Christina, would you call the roll, please? Then we did motion, excuse me, I get way ahead of myself.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Landine.
I'll second it.
Second by Gibbon. Now, Christina, you can call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Number six, this one I'm gonna let you read, Terry.
All right, I'm looking for board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute an agreement with Vanderwall Architect for services for the new office additions at the highway shop. And again, it says in here not to exceed four hundred and twenty-five thousand, but that's not their fee, that is the total overall project, is what, what that is, so.
Any questions for our highway superintendent concerning the architectural services and things? So, what is their fee structure?
It's about seventy-five thousand, is what they're figuring.
Whether it goes or not?
Whether it goes?
Yes.
You mean?
If, once we get bids, if we don't build it, they get paid that money?
I'm assuming so.
I just need a clarification.
We had legal look over the contract, so.
Further questions?
Yeah, this is, in total, this whole project is going to be about nineteen hundred square feet, right?
Oh, boy. Do I have that attachment on here? I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't. I think I had it on the last, like, a month ago when I brought that to you. I thought it might have been a little more than that, I, I would have to get back to you on that, Commissioner Aaron's.
I'm not trying to sharpshoot you here, I just had people call me who said, holy cow, four hundred and twenty-five thousand for nineteen hundred square feet? That's why I'm just trying to make sure we're, what we're looking at here, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so they're, basically, we'll be adding a large conference room, four office spaces, there's three individual offices, and then we'll have one space that's going to be like cubicle-style office, or offices for four individuals. And then we'll have a storage in the middle of this. And then we also are doing some slight remodel on the existing office area. We're going to be adding another bathroom next to the one that's already there, out there. And then that, where the admin sits, that's going to be moved over into where one of the existing offices is now, so, but.
Boy, Terry, that sounds like more than, that sounds, we're talking big time here. When you, when you factor in all your rooms, your offices, your bathroom, your meeting room, that's gotta be more than fifteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, I, and I, that doesn't seem, that number doesn't seem right, but I would have to look on the plans to get.
Yeah, I'm just going off page two here, under paragraph one point, one point two. And in here, the architect says, an approximately sixteen to, sixteen hundred, nineteen hundred square foot addition to the existing office located at dot, 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 dot. So, the architects believe it's sixteen to nineteen hundred square feet.
And, and maybe, yeah, I, I thought it was slightly more than that, but.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, I mean, ju- just, I want to bring this up, just to clarify, because I think this goes towards Commissioner Poppins' question, and it's covered here in the agreement. I think it was a little confusing in the way that it was put on the agenda. The entire project is listed by the architects here as, um, cost of work as four hundred and twenty-five thousand, not the architect's fee as four hundred and twenty-five.
So, the architect fees remain at seventy, seventy-five thousand, correct?
Did we get other proposals, Terry?
We tried to get a few other architects involved in this, but nobody else would take the project on because it was too small.
And so... I don't know. Seventy-five thousand seems high to me, but.
Questions?
That's seventy-five thousand, seventy-five grand to design a building that comes out, as we heard in the last hearing, for a two-stall garage size. I mean, I know there's like, I'm not trying to minimize what you're doing out there, you guys are doing great work. But it just, it seems on the surface very excessive. And not because of anything you all have done, I think it probably just goes towards the way the world is today, but it just seems a little high.
It is high.
Well, I'm just, was it a negotiated price, or was they just here, take it or leave it?
This is what they gave us in the contract, was that number. And again, I, like I said, I don't, we, we had tried to get other, a couple other architects, I think we tried getting Arc Inc., I think we tried another one, I think John did. But most of them, either one, they didn't call you back, or two, they said, this is just too small of a project for us. And I think when we had looked at this a year and a half or two years ago, I think we had the same issue. And that, at that time, we had some very rough drafts done by Arc Inc. And we had asked them what their fee was going to be, and it was, I can't remember at that time, I would have to look back on records, but I thought their fee was going to be up there. And I think at that time, that is why it got axed at that time, because the fee was too high for the amount of space you're adding, but.
Well, the reality is, Terry, if you can't find anybody, you, you know, you want to do this, you take what you got. It comes out to, if you divide seventy-five thousand by nineteen hundred, you got about thirty-nine dollars a square foot to design. Well, is that unrealistic? I don't know, what do architects charge today? They're expensive, you know, so. Do we have any other questions for Terry at this one? Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this request? I'll offer the motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Poppins, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Landine. Further comments, hearing none. Christina, will you call the roll, please? Do you have, does he?
No, never mind.
Commissioner, or, Mr. Chair, it's a decision that is not easy for me, Terry. And I'm not even sure how I'm gonna vote yet, I've got seconds to make up my mind. It's a lot of money. I know we need it, but it's a lot of money. So, I'm, I can't even tell you, and we have to, when the third vote comes out, which way it's going right now, because it's a lot of money. But as you said, you've tried to get architects, you've tried to do a lot of things. I think I'm going to approve, moving forward, at least to get the architects, get the design, and see how our bids come in. But man, this is, this is the world that we're facing in trying to get things built nowadays.
So, design is underway, they're at ninety percent? So, I had came to you and asked you if you wanted us to move forward, like, a month, month and a half ago? And you said, yes, let's move forward. So, we got a contract, we're working contract back and forth with legal team and, and Vanderwalls. So, now I finally got it here ready to, to sign. So, their hope is, we're ready to go to bid mid-April, early April, is what they're hoping, so.
I just wanted to add something real quick, I did pull up the plans you had mentioned. There's also seven hundred and five square feet of remodeling that'll occur at the front entrance to facilitate the addition. So, that's factored into design as well.
Okay.
Just for.
I have a process question for either one of you gentlemen, or anybody in here who may know. You're right, Terry, I voted a month ago to support design because I wanted to see the bids. I, from process question, let me ask this, can we wait till we get the bids to approve this seventy-five thousand dollar expenditure? Because I mean, at the time, I wasn't voting for seventy-five grand, I was voting to see some bids. I mean, like, a normal person would say, okay, show me the menu, I want to know what I'm ordering. Are you telling us now we have to approve this because we voted for that thing thirty days ago?
I'm not a legal person, so that's not my expertise.
Well, I am, and I don't even know.
I mean. You know, I mean...
I can, I can take a look at it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm incl- from my point of view, regular homeowner who just wants to do a 1,900 square foot project, and I say to myself, before I sign off on spending 75K of potentially 425, can I at least see the bids? That's what I'm thinking in my mind, is we would have that information before hitting the go button on, on sending checks out the door.
I think what, if I correct my phrasing, Terry, what we got was a estimate from an architect of what he thinks it might be. Cannot go to bid until you actually have the drawings.
Correct.
So it's a process. I'm going to unfortunately say that I didn't know the architectural fees were that high of the, of the cost. We are gonna be responsible for those fees, one way or the other. The same token, when the bids actually do come in, it's still gonna be a hard decision to make, to move forward, so.
Just for the record, with the addition, if you add 700 feet to 19, you come up with about 2,600, that lowers the cost down to $29 a square foot.
Bargain.
You know, I mean, which, you know, not all that bad, when you think about it. I think if you put any building up, you're gonna find a lot more. If you're not, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this expenditure. We'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
Uh, yes, yes, I mean, yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries four to one. Thank you, Terry.
Next item I have is board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute an agreement with Dakota Traffic Services for the 2024 striping project, which was bid for and awarded to them for $128,821.30.
Terry, quick question, was that within what your estimate was going to be?
Yeah, it's slightly lower, from what I budget, my budgeted number.
We always like that word out of your mouth versus the alternative, so. With that, Mr. Chair, to offer a motion to approve.
Well, hold it, we need to get to further questions for Terry. If not, public comment, please. Hearing none, motion time. Commissioner Poppins?
I would offer that motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Poppins, second by Commissioner Aaron's to approve. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Item number eight, Commissioner Aaron's.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my agenda item is board discussion in action, and I'll just put heavy emphasis on discussion, to initiate a review of the Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan, Joint Jurisdictional Agreement with the City of Sioux Falls. So recently, there's been some new information put out, Mr. Chairman, regarding just how fast the City of Sioux Falls thinks it's moving towards growth and development in the joint jurisdictional area. Specifically, it sounds like, so let me take a step back for the public and maybe even some commissioners, you know, who don't have a lot of fidelity on this issue. So, City of Sioux Falls has what's called our three-tier growth areas. They call it tier one, two, and three. Tier one is for immediate growth and development. Tier two is for midterm, and then tier three is for future development. Right now, insofar as it relates to the joint jurisdictional area, which I think, well, which I represent the lion's share of, those folks who live there, and then I think some of it rolls over to Commissioner Poppins, if I'm not mistaken, he may have a slice of it over there. But, you know, I talk with these folks a lot out there, and the tier three growth area primarily affects the joint jurisdictional area, because the City of Sioux Falls has plans, of course, to expand south into southeastern Sioux Falls, into that joint area, which is also still, should we say, county jurisdiction area. And we have a joint agreement with the City of Sioux Falls for any growth and development there. It has to be approved both by this board as well as by the city council. And the new information that came out, at least new to the public, I should say, for the most part, is that tier three growth area, it's gonna take about 15 to 25 years to fill that area in. And that area only covers, Mr. Chairman, about 40% of the joint jurisdictional area. So that means by 2040, we're not even looking at the whole joint area being covered with growth. Originally, when this board, many years ago, entered into the joint agreement with the City of Sioux Falls, there were thoughts, hopes, beliefs, that the entire joint area, you know, just imagine a square box going all the way down to Highway 106 at the bottom, would all be filled in with people and housing and development, and that's just, that hasn't happened. The growth is not moving as far south fast as what the elected officials thought at the time. And so what we have now, Mr. Chairman, is we have a vacuum. And that vacuum is what is occurring between north of 106, moving all the way up to, let's say, 90th Street in Sioux Falls. And this isn't a, this isn't a solution in search of a problem, because we have active applicants who come in front of us right now, who are living under those current joint rules. And it says things in the, in the joint, in the, in the comprehensive plan, such things as, we're gonna maintain Agland as Agland. Well, then, when an applicant comes forward and says, I wanna build something south of 90th Street but north of 106, they're met with some resistance from the staff, because that's the plan that our previous commission created. But it's not just keeping Agland Agland. Everybody agrees we've gotta maintain Agland in Lincoln County in those areas that are not ripe for development. So please don't misinterpret my comments here today as pertaining to all Agland. I'm only driving my comments today towards the joint jurisdictional area, where I can assure you and the public, Mr. Chairman, many people who own Agland want to sell that Agland in a heartbeat, as long as they can get the right price. Now, with that said, you know, we have other provisions in the comprehensive plan, believe that, or I shouldn't say believe, it states that that area from 90th to 106th Street is all gonna be residential. So recently, there was an applicant who came in front of us, where one of the reasons for denial was, and this is right off Highway 11, where it says, well, this area is intended to be residential. Well, I'm sorry, but no, it's not, because the growth demands aren't, aren't moving as fast as what they thought they were. But number two, you're never gonna put a residential neighborhood next to Highway 11. You're gonna feather it in, and then on those arterial corridors, you'll have commercial development, especially with Highway 11 and 106. So those are gonna be commercial centers. They're even identified as commercial centers in the, in the joint comprehensive plan. So I think in a lot of ways, the comprehensive plan itself is not keeping up with the rate of growth that we're seeing. So, long story short, Mr. Chairman, what I would like us to do is a county commission here, and I understand if folks aren't ready to take action today, but we need to move sooner rather than later, because we are seeing applicants in those areas who wanna do things, and then it requires a deviation from the plan. Furthermore, we saw it here today. You know, we've got this out, what I believe is an outdated ordinance for 1,500 square feet out in the rural areas, but we routinely are approving plans for buildings that exceed 1,500 square feet. And it's just, it's just one more little rock on the scale, if you will, of an example of how our comprehensive planning is not keeping up with the marketplace, if you will. Now, also, it probably bears repeating, but the comprehensive plan update that we're going through with regard to the county does not apply to this area that I'm talking about. So the comprehensive plan that we're undergoing right now has nothing to do with the joint jurisdictional area. It does not apply to that. If we want a comprehensive plan update to this area, we've got to invite that, and we've got to request our partners from the City of Sioux Falls engage in that process. So what I'm proposing here this morning, Mr. Chairman, is, and this'll be a marathon, not a sprint, this is not an event, this is a process. And so all that I'm proposing here, Mr. Chairman, you know, I would appreciate to have the commission's support in doing this, is that what we do is, you know, if somebody says, well, Aaron's, what is your vote for today? My vote simply would authorize this commission to put itself on record as saying, hey, City of Sioux Falls, will you please engage with us on updating the joint comprehensive plan? So that's what my motion would do, Mr. Chairman. So, and thank you for indulging me here this morning, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, if you could...
No, I'm, I'm gonna ask for public comment, too, in a minute.
The, and these are things that since the joint jurisdiction was set up, there's always been an overview of, is it meeting the objective or not meeting the objective? And for the most part, it has met the objective to try to have some organized growth. Does it need to have some modification? Absolutely. I do disagree, though, that I think it is pertinent that we first do our comprehensive plan to understand what our belief the rural area should be, and then try to incorporate that into the joint jurisdictional area as well pertaining to their needs. The, the simple fact is, we can pull a joint jurisdiction agreement at any point in time, at least that's what has been told to me when we first put in joint jurisdiction. By no means, I think it is, it has, serves a place, but it definitely needs to have some fine tuning. But I would like to have a, an overview of what we're planning on doing with all of our county versus stepping first into this decision here, but your points are well made otherwise. Thank you.
Comments, Commissioner Landine?
Thank you. Commissioner Aaron's, did, I mean, since we're working on our comprehensive plan, do you, have you had any conversations with planning and zoning about whether they are looking that as part of their comprehensive plan review and rewrite?
They're not.
They're not at all?
They're not. The way it was explained to me is, I'll just paraphrase to be diplomatic here, but, you know, kind of waiting for the City of Sioux Falls to make an overture. And my belief is, why don't we just take the first step? Why don't we just make the overture to them, as opposed to waiting for the City of Sioux Falls to exercise or initiate some leadership on this?
Because Sioux Falls already has their 2040 Comprehensive Plan completed, correct?
They do, for, both for the City of Sioux Falls, and then for the joint area, which is not subject, I just, I gotta say this 100 times so the public and folks understand this, our comprehensive plan review that we're going through right now will have no applicability, you know, legally, to the joint area.
No, and I understand that. I just almost feel like it would be remiss to not at least be looking at their comprehensive plan when doing our own comprehensive plan. It doesn't, I don't know. Why can't we get out in front of it, I guess? So I, I agree with you on that point.
Yeah, and just so folks understand here, we're not, you know, we're just trying to get this on the table, trying...
Oh, here's the man of the hour, just walked in.
There he is. Trying to put our best foot forward. Maybe he can answer, Toby.
Toby, you got some questions here for you?
I'm a little winded, so sorry about that.
Toby, and, so we're on item eight on our agenda. On the Sioux Falls, their 2040 Comprehensive Plan, are we, is there a reason that we're not looking at that, or are we, when we're doing our own comprehensive plan for the county?
Sure. Yeah, the overture has been made, so the City of Sioux Falls, this isn't public knowledge, but the City of Sioux Falls is gonna contract, update their comprehensive plan this year.
Oh, okay.
So for the next 20 months, they will be studying it, so.
I think it's public now.
Sure. I'll make it public, sure.
All right.
It was quasi-public, I think.
Sure. Well, they're out for bids right now for consultants, so that part's public, I guess.
Okay.
But I don't know if they've made a full public announcement that they're gonna update the comp plan, but their goal is the next 20 months. I've said we're shareholders, stakeholders in that process, so we'll have a vote in it. You can appoint one of your members, too, to be a part of that process, but, yes, I think, you know, as Commissioner Aaron said, City of Sioux Falls is growing by 6,000 people last year. They recognize the need that they need to look at their long-term growth plans, and they're a major player. Their major growth areas are the county, is Lincoln County and Minnetonka County, so those areas are important to them and how they wanted to see them grow. As well as, I think it is public knowledge that the City of Sioux Falls did buy land just to the east of Highway 106 and Highway 11 to construct what we've always heard would be the major lift station. That lift station will make all of growth area tier threes, growth area tier twos and ones. So there is plans in place, really, to, to expand some of that infrastructure in that area, so. Does that answer questions, otherwise?
That answer's mine.
Toby, do you know if whether or not, and if you don't, that's fine, 'cause I wasn't able to find out the answer either, when they go to contract, update their comprehensive plan, is that also going to pertain to the joint area?
Their, their comprehensive plan addresses the city and their growth areas, then when we adopt it, the update will adopt that area, or their comp plan for our area for that particular area.
Okay, so, long story short, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for Toby? To your, to your point, Commissioner Aaron's, you will have probably another appeal coming similar to one that we had before, about how this conflicts with growth or overlapping on a issue with the storage development, storage bins, which we had, we've had one before, we'll be having another one. There's a lot of discussion on this from developers as well, on this issue. We have a motion, and we have a second on Commissioner Aaron's proposal. Any other comments?
So I'll make the motion if there isn't already.
I was gonna say, I didn't know we had a motion.
Oh, okay, well, call for a motion, I thought you made one.
Motion called for.
All right.
Did we get a second? Just for clarity, what is the motion?
Okay. The motion is that this county commission is calling for a review of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan in the Joint Jurisdictional Agreement with the City of Sioux Falls. And what that means is, we authorize our planning and zoning director here to go to the City of Sioux Falls and tell him my commission has voted to start this process, and we're gonna become a major stakeholder in that process.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Landine, second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yeah, yes. Item number nine.
All right, following in the planning and zoning footsteps here, Mr. Chairman. Board discussion, and I put the words possible action there, to create an ad hoc committee to review growth and development in the Spring Creek area, and to develop a report to supplement the county comprehensive plan update. So I, you know, I had some, you know, discussions with Commissioner Poppins a little bit, as well as others, and folks out in the Spring Creek area, you know, Lake Alvin, Spring Creek, we have a lot of actions that come in front of us. That seems to be, more so than not, one of those very heavily populated areas that still happens to fall into the rural county jurisdictional area, and it's along the, you know, it's along the Big Sioux River, and it falls completely outside the jurisdiction of the City of Sioux Falls. And to a certain extent, the City of Harrisburg, although Harrisburg is pushing east and starting to impinge on a lot of that, what I wanna do, Mr. Chairman, is I wanna get a group of stakeholders together who live in that Spring Creek and Lake Alvin area, so that we can start to resolve some of these issues, given how, there's a lot of people who wanna move out there. We've had, what, four or five people come in front of us wanting to build homes out there? And I think for most of them, we kind of put our foot down, we said, hold on a minute here, this just does not seem consistent with our plan. So I think what's happening, and we have a lot of folks who come in here now as well and say, hey, I moved out to the country to live where nobody lives, and now all these people wanna come and live by me. So, I, I mean, the public... So, I, I mean, the public certainly wants to have a vote in what the comprehensive plan looks like, and people have said to me, okay, can't we get some guidance from our commission out here about what growth is going to look like in the Spring Creek area? Because let's just face it, folks, I have concerns about a comprehensive plan that continues to say, well, we don't support growth out here because this is ag land. Well, the fact of the matter is, there's just some areas in this county that are only ag land for, for the economic taxation reason, because the owner is just simply waiting to sell in order to, to a developer. But there's other parts, and don't get me wrong, my comments here about ag land are only towards this area. They do not apply to other parts of the county where folks are farming and actively engaged in farming. So please don't misconstrue my comments. But we all know where these areas are, where there's intense pressure for development and growth. I don't want us as a county to get overrun by the growth, you know? Instead of trying to fend it off, we need to try to mold it, guide it, and shape it in the proper direction. And again, I think the best way to do that, insofar as it relates to Spring Creek and that Lake Alvin area and whatnot, we set up an ad hoc committee, we invite stakeholders to come in, uh, we do a couple meetings in order to understand what their concerns are, to understand what they would like that area to look like. I'd call it kind of a bottom-up review, if you will, from the grassroots. And, you know, obviously, I'm, I would volunteer to serve on this committee, but, um, uh, then what we do as a result of those meetings is we create a supplement to the, to the county comprehensive plan that's being developed right now. So, long story short, Mr. Chairman, that's what the motion would do.
Just a, I have a question.
Comments?
Question. Toby, can you come up? Thanks. So, for our comprehensive plan update, we've got a survey open right now, is that right?
Uh, the story map's open, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, are we getting input on that from people?
Yep.
I'm just looking at big picture. I don't want to create more ad hocs if we don't need to, but people can put their input in on this, correct?
Yes.
And then your office is processing that?
Our consultant's processing, yes.
Okay, and they know, I mean, people indicate where they live, correct?
So, uh, great feature question for me to say that we have this open on the website right now, and so this is the draft future land use map. And anyone can go on there and put these pin marks and then make comments. The, the comments aren't public, just for our consultant to look at. But as you noticed, you know, a lot of those areas that Commissioner Aaron's pointed out is, the public has commented on it, on some of those areas. But encourage more, uh, that's what makes the plan more bottom-up from the public, is if we get some of those comments back. Yes, there is an open process for, for their comments right now. Yep.
Okay. Any other?
Um, my comment would only be, as Commissioner Aaron's, your points are well made. I do believe, as Toby has indicated, we have started the process. Uh, and you and I have talked that there is a need to try to, um, come up with some, some other mechanism to handle areas that are ag but not ag, and what's the best use for it. But I don't think we should limit it just to that Spring Creek area, as, as our plan is currently doing, it's looking at the whole county. Um, I do think there could be a time down the road that we, that bring in a, the, a specific ad hoc committee together to maybe address those types of areas, including the Spring Creek area. But I would like us just to kind of be a little patient, as we're already working on our comprehensive plan currently, and then address it if there are some weaknesses that, that need to be addressed once we kind of are putting it together. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gibbon, any comments?
I agree, I guess, with Commissioner Poppins. I think there'll be other areas that we'll probably need to address along the Spring Creek, uh, as we go forward.
Commissioner Aaron's, I would, I would offer this. I kind of agree with you. It's an interesting thing, when we talk about other growth areas, you're also confronted by the growth of T., Harrisburg, Lennox, et cetera. So, uh, you know, but this is an area that affects Sioux Falls. But my concern, Commissioner Aaron's, is not only is the comprehensive plan, but is if you go down 57th Street in Sioux Falls, all of those wetlands that were holding back all of the water on a, you know, on a timely basis, that usually flows through Spring Creek. And we've had one great flushout already where we had to spend, you know, we had a huge flood, we had several homes that were inundated, and we had to put culverts all the way down practically to Lake, Lake Alvin. So I think that we really need to get ahead of that situation, because we've encouraged people not to build there. In fact, we were taken to court to, because we denied building permits along that creek. And now that's been pretty well filled in, and you're having a potential problem coming in from the north, because these holding ponds up in Sioux Falls are still releasing water, even though we've had one of the driest years we've ever had in our history. So my concern is for Spring Creek itself. And I do agree with you, we should look at that growth area. We should kind of manage that, so we don't get this, you know, hodgepodge situation, because they want to have this little meandering creek next to their backyard, when it can turn, it can be a raging situation, wiping out their entire house. So I, I'm really not opposed to looking at a, to ad hoc committee, not only for the, for the comprehensive plan side, but also from the physical side, to make sure that we have set the proper setbacks and boundaries for, uh, building purposes.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Um, you know, for the others on the commission, obviously, I represent this area, so that's why I brought it forward as proposed. I think it's good comments from everybody. I have no opposition to expanding the scope of this, and here, here's my point of view. I don't like us as a government body relying upon people to just jump on the website and make their comments. I want to take, which is good. That's good that we get that feedback, because I think a lot of times, sometimes you get better unvarnished feedback from folks when it's in an anonymous setting, or they feel comfortable going online. What I'm concerned about, though, is given the, we, we are still, just last week, I think it came out from Governor Gnome's office, Lincoln County fastest-growing county in the state.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve and a half percent growth rate, still the ninth-fastest-growing county in the nation per capita. Sioux Falls alone, 6,000 people a year. At the last census, we had 72,000 people. We're gonna, we could be at that rate of growth north of, we're going to be over 85,000 people in the next six years in this county. I do not want us to say, let's wait. I want us to say, let's do it now. Let's just get our arms around it now and embrace the change right away. Because I don't want us to leave people out of the conversation, because we didn't go to them and say, hey, get your butts in here and let's talk about this. Um, because otherwise, then we end up with a comprehensive plan. Toby and his folks have been doing great work on it. But, uh, then we kind of end up with more of the same. And I think, when you, when you dig into these statistics and numbers, we are getting overwhelmed by the growth that's coming at us. And I want to get in front of it and help manage it and guide it, instead of it dragging us along and pulling us down under. So, that's the whole point of my discussion here, is to have a conversation about this. And I think it's a great idea if we wanted to include other areas of the county into that as well. It's just, it, you know, you go to some of these meetings around the state, Jones County lost, you know, there's only 900 people who live in Jones County, I think it went down. Um, most of the state, what is it, half of the counties in South Dakota, lost population? Fifty percent of the counties lost population. We're in that very, you know, small minority that is seeing this incredible, fantastic growth. And, uh, I just don't want us to get left behind. So if we need to include other parts of the county in this, I'm, I'm all for that.
Toby, this is a good discussion, but I want to call you up. Please come up. Would you tell, would you just inform the commission and the public, the number of housing applications, because I was with you one day or one for a few hours, and you were talking about how many applications you have? How, what are they? Can you give, you got any numbers on the tip of your tongue here that you could spit out for us?
Not that I want to think about. I mean, it's, 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 we're overwhelmed. I mean, it's, we've had, you know, we're, we're averaging probably 10, 15 permits a day, you know? And you guys don't see that growth. I mean, we see that, because we have to review the permits and approve it, but, you know, and just, so with that is, but I don't think that addresses, you know, kind of Commissioner Aaron's thoughts, but I'll add to some of those, just from my perspective, is, I think one of the most important things that we learned through this comprehensive plan update is that things change pretty quickly. And so one of the things that we're proposing in the new comprehensive plan, that I haven't really talked about yet, but it'll be a part of it, is, is to have a process to amend the comprehensive plan. So currently, when a landowner comes into our office, they bought land, they have a dream, they have a vision, if it doesn't meet the plan, we have to recommend denial with that, right? Well, there is things change, and you guys have different policy hats than, than staff has, or that the planning commission has. So we're going to add a provision in there for particular of those areas in Spring Creek, or those areas in other parts of the county. If a landowner wants to desire change, they would, first step would be to go through a comprehensive plan amendment process. We don't have that provision right now. That's something that we'll add to it. And so it'll create more bureaucracy to it, but it'll create an, an opportunity for us to, to look at particular areas. The second thing that we're really looking at, what I'll say is, phase two, is, is the most important part. Uh, I've said this before, I've said to the planning commission, I've said it to you, I don't think the public gets jazzed about policy, future land use planning, because it doesn't impact them. They don't think about it. But step two is something that Commissioner Aaron's talked about today. We need to update the zoning ordinance. So after you adopt the comprehensive plan, you update the zoning regulations. His comments today, there's many things that we've identified as staff, as policy, we're not the policymakers, that's up to you, but there's many things we need to look at to adjust as we go forward with things. Some things good, some things bad, more clarification. At that point, I think it's going to be highly important that we have a stakeholder group in that, and that you guys are responsible for appointing that group, because that's the laws. That's the things that get made. Um, our role is, is to enforce the laws and to look at the laws. Uh, but we need to make sure that those laws are, are community-supported. Part of the problem we have in Lincoln County historically is, is that in order to have a good plan, in order to have good planning, you have to have community support, buy-in. It seems consistently that we don't have that. And so that's part of what we're working on with the new comprehensive plan. I think the new comprehensive plan, if you wait, and we will go through this public comment, public update, I think you'll see that the public does support those avenues. But the second part of it is going to be the controversial thing, so things are going to generate a lot of discussion, a lot of, so I don't want to burn out people at this stage. I, I want to make sure that we have an engaged public at that stage, because there is some definite policy law changes that we have to make as a board, as a county, so.
Okay.
Yep. But other than that, yes, uh, we, we approve on, just within the last few weeks, we're approving 25 permits a week, a day, almost. It's, it's, it's almost, you know, we're working, you know, more hours than we probably should on that kind of stuff, but, but it's good. It's good to be in a county that has growth as opposed to a county that doesn't have growth, so it's a good thing to have, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Toby. One of the things that I'm going to talk about at some point in time, looking at, having talked to Toby and his department, uh, he's going to need some help, because you can't sustain that kind of growth on, currently, he needs a, he needs another employee up there, but that's for another day. So Commissioner Aaron's, are you, are you still want to make the motion to have this particular, uh, ad hoc committee, or do you want to delay that until we expand that to a larger, um, area that they would investigate?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, these were good, this is a good conversation this morning, good comments, and I think what, what we can do is, is go back and, uh, you know, retool this to get some better buy-in, and, uh, maybe it's, we'll expand the scope of it. I am ki, I, I am maybe, maybe overly insistent that we do this as part of the comprehensive plan process. So it would be sooner rather than later that I'd probably be coming back with this.
Okay. I would, I would be in full support of that. With that said, we will move on to number 10. Joe, Commissioner Aaron's, this is yours.
Yeah, it is, thank you. So, uh, excuse me. Friday, March 29th, 2024, is Vietnam Veterans War Commemoration Day, and I want to thank our new VSO, Mr. Ackley, for putting that, uh, presentation together. So I believe, I'm looking at my calendar here, but our new veteran service officer, this Friday at 2:00, out at the Fairgrounds facility in Lennox, is going to hold the commemoration event for our Vietnam veterans. You know, here in South Dakota, um, we had approximately 20, 23,000 people, uh, who joined the military, either through the draft or voluntarily, and, uh, served in the armed forces. Um, and so, um, excuse me, we had 23,000 people there, um, in the start of 1965. I was looking at the wrong bullet point here. Um, I want to make sure I get this correct. We had, uh, 27,000 Vietnam veteran-era veterans, um, who currently live in South Dakota. 27,000 Vietnam-era veterans who live here. We have seven South Dakotans that remain missing in action, and we have 210 South Dakotans who made the ultimate sacrifice and, in Vietnam. Uh, so what I want to do here is, I want to thank Mr. Ackley for putting together the event. It's this Friday, Good Friday, 2:00, out at the 4H grounds, and, uh, I'll be there to participate in that. Uh, we definitely want to thank our Vietnam veterans for, uh, their service and sacrifice. They did not have as receptive of a homecoming back then as, uh, what our current veterans do. And so, we need to make, we need to make up for that. We've got to make it right for them in this era. And, uh, you know, speaking as a veteran myself, and someone who still currently serves in the Army Reserve, uh, I can tell you this, and I was just gone for the last week, uh, doing the Army training briefs, uh, with my Army Reserve unit, and our job is to, uh, I'm in charge of a battalion commander, in charge of a drill sergeant unit, and, uh, my drill sergeants are in charge of turning these young men and women into soldiers. And it's a job, I can tell you, that they take very seriously, um, because they know that at any time, these young men and women may get deployed, have to serve in combat, and have to serve in war. And so, knowing that, it kind of impresses upon me the importance that we say thank you to our Vietnam veterans, and I want to ask, uh, every, everyone on this commission to support the, uh, the resolution that I put in the shared file there, and show support for our Vietnam veterans.
Well, I don't think you'll have any objections to that, Commissioner. So you don't, there's no act, you want action taken in a formal motion?
Yeah, you know, the agenda did call for action.
All right. Uh, we'll have any public comment before we take a vote on this? I don't think there is any public, do we open for, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Aaron, second by Commissioner Landy. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. Very, very worthwhile, and your comments, Commissioner Aaron's, are well-received and well-spoken. Number 11, board action to award bid for bid request 24-001 property in Canton Township is our auditor round.
I've got these for her.
You got her? Okay.
I do.
You're going to read these, by the way, I was supposed to, I was told. Never mind. I had orders.
How do you want me to, do you want me to read each bid that came in, the highest and the lowest? What's your preference on?
Do you have a preference, commissioners?
I think we need to identify which parcel that this bid is appropriate to, identify the highest bid only, um, but that'd be my...
Okay. It sounds good. So let's talk about... So let's talk about the parcel of property and what the bid is, the highest one.
This one is for approximately 38.48 acres of farmland located within tract A in the northwest quarter of section 21, township 98 North, range 49 west of the 5th PM, Lincoln County, South Dakota. This is property that is just south of the highway shop. Highest bid is coming in from Paul Mossen at $330 per acre for the year 2024, $340 per acre for the year 2025, and $350 per acre for the year 2026.
Any comments or questions on that particular, from Paul Mokken, on his bid for a three-year lease?
I want to thank him first, then.
Okay. Any public comment concerning this? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Move to accept the highest bid.
Second.
Motion by Poppins, second by Aaron's to accept the highest bid. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine, yes. Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Number 12, Christina.
This is for approximately 50 acres of broom and volunteer grass located at the Marvsky Lincoln County Airport. High bid came in from Jordan Andernock at $165 per acre for 2024, $165 per acre for 2025, $165 per acre for 2026.
Okay. We have bids coming in, as you just heard. Do we have any public comment concerning the leasing of this hay ground at the Marvsky Airport? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll go move to grant it to the highest bidder.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gibbon, second by Commissioner Aaron's. Any comments? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine, yes. Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Number 13.
This is for approximately 12 acres of alfalfa located at the Lincoln County 4H grounds near Lenox. High bid is from Jordan Andernock at $255 per acre for 2024, $255 per acre for 2025, $255 per acre for 2026.
You've heard, you've heard the location, you've heard what it's for, you've heard the bids. Any public comment? Hearing none. Commissioners, we need a vote.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Aaron, second by Commissioner Landine. Any comments? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine, yes. Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. We have eliminated number 14. Under, we have Ms. Montgomery. We have taken the item off of the consent agenda dealing with Lincoln County claims in the amount of $766,905.98 and you wish to have some comments. Would you come forward, please?
Thank you. I don't know how to use your overhead, but it's the commissioners, oh, Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Thank you. On commissioners' report, my question on this one is, we have two desks, one for the elections in total of $2,165.39 and the same desk, $2,165 under the auditor. And I was just wondering, are both those desks going to the same office? And so that's what I brought it up for is I just didn't know if, if, you know, that, that expense of $2,000 desks for two things, if that's what they need, I understand. But just to me, when I read it, I wondered if it wasn't for one.
Well, Linda, what's, what's our auditor have to say?
So the cost of the desk, because I run the two departments, was split between the two departments.
Okay.
So it costs 4,000 plus dollars?
Yep.
For a desk? Okay. And the next one is on this last sheet under the total increase in revenue. This, according to my math, the 460, 464 should be 463. Those are my only two comments on that.
We've heard the two comments and this will take special board action to approve the Lincoln County claims in the amount of $766,905.98. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Landine, second by Commissioner Poppins. Any further public comment on this? Hearing none, we'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine, yes. Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Linda, thank you for your comments.
Hope we get a lot of use out of that desk.
Is there, this is an opportunity for public comment right now from the public that hasn't been discussed previously on the agenda? Is there any public comments? I will, I want to make this an announcement. We give you five minutes. So I would hope that anybody who addresses on public comments does adhere to the five-minute rule because we do have the, the light situation to correct that. So we would ask that for anybody to respect that. Okay? Public comments?
Thank you, sir. Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I don't know if you had an opportunity to listen to the Brookings County Commissioners Meeting last week. There was a citizen that brought before, Rick Weibel. He was able to testify during public hearing. And what he demonstrated is there's a security vulnerability to ESNS and the EMS, EMS workstations. On a forensic copy, he was able to actually go into and change passwords and create a password. Thus, the security of the EMS machine is vulnerable. What I would like to do is next session during public comment or during regular business, to show that video to you and to the public. And I would need the five minutes because the video, he was able to actually get into in less than four minutes, but the video is actually about just less than five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Look forward to that. Any other public comments? Hearing none. How about commissioner reports? Any reports from the commission?
Mr. Chair, airport, our manager out there did want to come in today because of weather. He's trying to maintain, keep the runway open. There are some scheduled flights today. A lot of things are changing there, a lot of good things coming. And hopefully he'll be able to come next week and maybe get a, a little presentation. But I do want to say that there'll be a lot of discussion coming in the next couple of years on, on what we're going to do with the existing site as well as the land that has been acquired by the taxpayers to expand that airport. So, thank you.
I would report that District 6 had a meeting in Vermillion last week in which many things were discussed. We heard from the report, on the legislative report that the governor's not going to veto anything. And again, we want to thank our legislature representative Otten for bringing forward some valued legislation that will certainly help the county as it deals with the pending penitentiary that may or may not be here. I was going to mention, Commissioner Aaron's, you brought this up and I think it's worth repeating. When you look at Lincoln, Lincoln County, it's 12.6%. The next closest was, I think, Pennington County, which may have had four or five. There were a total of about 12 counties that showed increases. And some of those increases were like less than a percent, but they didn't lose population. Well, when you think about 12 counties out of 64 that lost population in Spink and Hand and Hawken and those places, how long they will be able to sustain themselves is going to be a subject at some point in time that counties are going to have to address their own future. And one of the discussions that were had at the district meeting is something we tried once before to have joint purchasing agreements. And I remember bringing all of the counties together in District 6 and talking about how you would bid your blades for your, for your road graders, how you would bid your salt, how you would build your asphalt situations. And what we found was there was no uniformity on the grades of what one county would use for another. For example, Lincoln County uses the best grade there is. That's why our roads are in good condition. On the other hand, you have some counties that use far less and it, it, it doesn't last, but it's much cheaper. So one of the things that we're going to try and do again is to bring all of those people, all those counties back together and see if there is a way of joint purchasing on some of these major items for expenditures. So, anything, that's about it. John, do you have any updates at all you want to talk about? I want to thank our administrator for getting a nice parking lot all done, all gravelled. Do we have any idea when they're going, can I, going to blacktop that at all? Steve?
Well, I defer to John. He, he did all the heavy lifting on that project.
Well, we'd like to park there, John. That's why, you know, we don't want to get our cars dirty.
Good morning, commissioners. John Romble, Building Superintendent. You know, I was not prepared to talk about it, but yes, the, the, um, the old jail has since been tore down and we have a gravel parking lot. I see it got a little wet yesterday, so we had some issues out there. I guess we're in the process of negotiating with an engineer on doing a, to come up with a potential cost of what engineering would cost to make it into a parking lot. Obviously, there'll have to be some grade changes and, and that sort of thing to address the drainage. And I'm hoping the thing firms up a little bit because I'm still hoping to use it right now as a gravel parking lot. I just was, like I said, it got pretty wet yesterday, but it's the first, first moisture I guess we've had since they compacted it. So moving forward, I guess you'll be seeing in the near future something presented by one of us for, for where we're going to go with an engineering proposal. And then, of course, at that point, it'll be a determination whether we try to move something forward this year or put it through budget process for next year or however you guys want us to do that.
Okay.
Did that answer the question, I guess?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Otherwise, I don't have a lot to add for building projects right now.
All right. Any other comments for the commission on this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I want to give a shout out to Jack Kolbeck, one of our legislators. I want to thank him for his years of service in the legislature. I don't recall if he's running again. I don't think he is, but I do appreciate his efforts. And most recently, I appreciate his efforts wanting to look into property tax relief for South Dakota taxpayers. I hope that him and that other representative, Latner, are able to get a summer study going on that and have the, have the legislature start looking into this issue of property tax burdens and tax shifting and, and all of that. I think that'll be, we're hearing, hearing a lot of comments this year about property taxes and property values. And a lot of that is driven by growth and development and the popularity of Lincoln County and Sioux Falls in general. And just hope we can get some movement on that.
You know, I know we're, I like the idea of having a conversation amongst ourselves, talking about our future. I, I listened to a explanation on property taxes from Todd Meyer Henry, who talked in great depth on why taxes are what taxes are and helps explain for the increase this year, you know, of assessments that have gone up so much. And I asked him if, you know, if he would do about a 10-minute video to either put that on our own website so people could understand the complicated nature of how these things are processed. And he seems to have a pretty good handle. I think, Steve, you were there and listened to that. And I'm not so sure that we shouldn't have a video prior to every appeal that day so that people could watch that. Put it on a loop somewhere and, and let them see that. But it, it helps explain to the public just how these things happen. It isn't the county's fault and stuff like that. And the last comment is that April is county government month. So if you get a chance to talk about county government and the challenges that we have, we should be doing that. We should be doing more of it. But I'm sure that we'll be in the limelight coming up here for appeals. If there's no other business in front of the county commission, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. We're not having any executive sessions, are we today?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Subsection three and four, so items to.
Okay. Pardon me. We'll need a motion to go into executive session.
You know, Mr. Chairman, recently I had a lawyer say to me, well, you guys only met down there for an hour, hour last time. How come it's going to take you so long this time? Because I was explaining to him some scheduling issues. And I, and I told him, well, just watch this meeting. You're going to find out how long it's going to take us. So with that, I'll make a motion to go into executive session under sub one, three and four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Aaron's, second by Landine to go into executive session. I'll call the roll, please, Christina.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine, yes. Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes. We are now in executive session. I'm not going to speak out of it, Commissioner Aaron's, but we have been told sometimes that commissioners talk too much. I don't know who that pertains to. I.
Executive session.
Second.
Motion by Poppins, second by Landine to come out of executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Landine, second by Aaron's to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.